Okay, the time now is 7:03. I will now call this meeting to order. At this time, if you could please silence your cellphones or any electronic devices, that would be greatly appreciated. Your greeters today at the door is Plan Director Stevens Breaker and Utilities Manager Bob Starting to my far right and your far left, we have Recording Secretary Tara Lockhart, City Clerk Susan Daederis, Deputy Mayor, Zone One Commissioner Lori Talland.
Good evening, everyone, welcome.
Zone Two Commissioner Travis Sargent.
Good evening, welcome.
And directly to my left and to your right, we have Zone Three Commissioner Kristen Deaton.
Good evening.
Zone Four Commissioner Howard Riley.
Good evening, everyone, welcome.
City Manager Joyce Shanahan. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley. City Attorney Randy Hayes. And I see Captain D.W. Smith over there. And Fire Chief Howard Bailey. And I'm Mayor Jason Leslie. At this time, please rise for the invocation, which I will be doing tonight. Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. As we gather today to discuss the affairs of our great city, let us seek wisdom and understanding in our deliberations. May we listen to one another and work together for the betterment of the city. We begin this meeting with open hearts and minds guided by a commitment to serve the people we represent. Amen.
What do we do to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands? One nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Okay, we're gonna move to number four, Audience Remarks. At this time, we'll hear from those of you who have signed a card to speak about any item which is not on the printed agenda for this meeting, including any items on the consent agenda. Each person will be given a total of three minutes. And my first one will be Nathan Davis.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to introduce myself, Nathan Davis, Downtown Redevelopment Services. So, Banky Parker invited us here to speak this evening. We are the consultant working on the Historic Structure Survey for the, for this side of the river. We are updating the 1986 Structure Survey that was done as part of the Florida Master Site File. We're doing 250 properties on this side, approximately from Mound to Rosewood and from the railroad to the river. It's being funded entirely from a grant that OMS received from the state of Florida, so no local money is going into it. During my time here, I've been really impressed with the city, the downtown and Main Street area. There's been a lot of preservation efforts, it's very visible. So, commend you on that. And then, I just want to thank Banky Parker for the opportunity to work in your community and to be here this evening, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Nathan. Next up is Jennifer Bright.
I have downloaded and gone through the 2,207-page full agenda packet of information that is available online for this meeting. When reading through the full agenda packet, not just the summary by title agenda that is handed out at the door, I have compiled a list of concerns and questions that I have sent to my Zone Two Commissioner. For those of you who have not noticed, there is never any monies listed on the title-only agenda. This is what started me on my quest to go through the full agenda packet, and the more I read, the more questions and concerns I've had. I have requested a meeting of my Commissioner at his convenience, based on his statement at his January 21 Commission meeting, that he would be happy to meet in person and discuss issues and concerns. I'm still waiting for a response. As to when and where would be the most convenient to meet him to address my concerns, I have not also received any written response this year to any questions or concerns. I do share my findings after reading the full agenda packet with those who ask, and sometimes they also ask questions. But they are met with a response from the City Manager stating, "Just read the full agenda packet, the answers are there." This material is exact material that the Commission receives. I can supply the last go-arounds of questions, concerns, responses, and city follow-ups to anyone who's interested. I would hope the Commissioners would also like to know the answers to at least some of these questions posed, so they can make informed decisions. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I don't have any more cards, so we're gonna move on to the approval of the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussions? Okay, all those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, motion approved. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are deemed routine and non-controversial. The action proposed is stated for each item. Unless the City Commissioner moves an item from the consent agenda, no discussion on individual items will occur, and a single motion will approve all items. Does any member of the Commission wish to pull any items from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor would like to pull Item J and Item L.
Hold on. Okay, so Commissioner Riley, J and L, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Sargent?
Six A, please, thank you.
Six A. Any other items pulled? No? Okay, is there a motion for approval?
Second.
Okay. No other discussion? City Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move to Six A. City Clerk, please read.
Resolution Number 2,025-79, a resolution authorizing the approval and execution of a purchase authorization for the purchase of one Freightliner M2 16-yard dump truck under Florida Sheriff's Association Bid Number FSA 23-VEH 21.1, declaring vehicle number 368 to be surplus property and authorizing the disposition thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution Number 2,025-79, read by title only.
Is there a motion for approval?
Approval.
Second.
Deaton with second. Discussion?
I'll go, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only question I have on this is, it just seems very low that we're only expected to get $1,500 to $3,000 when we auction this item. I mean, I think we should be getting a minimum of $5,000 plus. I know it's a used vehicle and it's old, but when you look this up, I just think that we can do better on selling this vehicle. That's all my comments.
Just out of curiosity, did you, how'd you figure out the value of that? Was it sold already, or?
It states it in the agenda item.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Okay, City Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes.
City Clerk, please read Six J.
Disposition, item titled intent to bid, CDBG Military Boulevard Sidewalk Improvements.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just bring this one forward. This is in my zone, it's over in the Forest Hills subdivision, and walking that area, those homes were built in the 1950s, 60s area, era. And those sidewalks in there are some of the most, some of the narrowest, probably most, probably least maintained sidewalks in the city. Two-foot-six-inch sidewalk is not very wide, and a lot of those are broken up and they don't meet ADA, current ADA requirements. So, I'm just, I just brought this up to say that I'm happy to see us moving forward. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, City Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes.
City Clerk, please read Six L.
Disposition, item titled RFP, Employee Benefits Broker of Record Services.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Okay.
Kristen, give me a second.
Sorry, yes, second.
The reason why, I'll explain. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, I work for a company that could potentially bid on this, so therefore, I'm not gonna participate in the voting of this, but the attorney at the Ethics Commission in Tallahassee said we could participate, or I could participate, in the comment, so that's why, thank you.
So, you can't, what you're saying is that you can't abstain yourself?
Conflict of interest.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have to say the same thing that Commissioner Sargent. I have a son that could potential, that works for a company that could potentially bid for this project, so this came up last year, and we had, I had permission to entertain discussion but not vote.
Okay. All right, any other discussion?
Did you want to start it off since you called it?
No, I don't care.
I have a few comments.
Have a few comments, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have something to say?
I do.
I do. The way this bid is written, to me, we're limiting who can participate in it, which I think is just the opposite of what we want with the bid process. We want more people to participate in a bid. That's how you get the best product, you create competitiveness, and the way this bid is written, I think is very limited on the minimum qualifications. I think you exclude large brokerage firms in the area, or that, maybe with, outside of the regions, like an Arthur J. Gallagher. Potentially, you could be ruling out a quote from the Florida League of Cities, their program. I don't know why we're only looking at high deductible options. The markets might be changing, maybe we want to look at other options. I think we should look at every option that's available in the employee benefits marketplace to make sure that we are getting the best product. With that being said, I think maybe we do put a provision there for local preference. Maybe it's three, five, 10 points, whatever, maybe you see fit for local vendors to participate in the bid. At the end of the day, this is about getting the best product for our taxpayer money that we're spending. This is a very large line item, and I think we just need to maybe table this and have that, that bid reworded. Thank you.
You're sure. Commissioner Deaton?
Thank you, and thank you for those comments. I'd personally like to see this one pulled and rewritten with the minimum qualifications. I do have a background in insurance for quite a number of years, and I, it honestly doesn't matter to me who gets it, however, I would like to see the fair and most competitive option, the best options for Ormond Beach, the most competitive, and the best coverage, of course. I would like to see at least, I'd like to see the verbiage lowered from 10 years to five years under the same broker name, only because I feel like we're excluding some really competitive options, including League of Cities if we do that. And I'd like to see the broker services changed from geographic area to Florida specifically. I think that could help us and help the city in general.
Randy, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. I can help you out with this a little bit this evening. So, this is just an RFP that includes the criteria that will be published. You can change that this evening if you want, and so, we can incorporate those changes into the RFP, the staff will make the changes and then, and then publish it, if that's your preference. Now, if you just want to pull and table it, then, you know, we can certainly do that as well. I don't know if the time factor is a consideration for that or not, but, but you can address these issues this evening if you wish to do that.
So, we could correct the minimum qualifications this evening?
You, you may. One, one point, though, is we don't have, so your, your local preference is not something within your ordinance that can be incorporated, because we don't provide for that for RFPs, it's only for, for, for the bidding process itself. So, there's a distinction between those two. And I don't know that we've looked at that in the past in terms of whether or not we can include a local preference for proposals as opposed to bids, but that would require an ordinance, a change to the ordinance itself.
But we could change the verbiage in this RFP specifically to state Florida municipalities rather than geographic?
You could, yes.
Okay, and that would, I think, help some of the, I really would like to include a quote from Florida League of Cities, specifically because I feel like this is what they do.
I, I, well, go ahead, sorry. Thank you. I think that we should table it, because there's a lot of questions that I asked, and to do it on the fly, I just, I think it's better if we can get the correct wording and everything within it and have it brought back to us, and to make sure that if we're gonna offer a, a local preference, that the correct wording's in there, and I just, I'm not comfortable doing that on the fly. And I think local preference, maybe Volusia County as the local preference, not specific to Ormond Beach, but I don't know how, how that can get worded, so that's just my comments. Thank you.
Keep in mind, whatever direction you give us tonight is how we'll reword the RFP, so if you agree tonight, you can just direct us to do that, and we'll do that and post the bid. So, I don't know if bringing it back to you is necessary.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. We could just, you know, have a discussion and then make the motion, someone will make the motion on what changes we want, and then you'll bring it back to us, correct?
Correct, and we can change the geographic or regional reference to whatever you decide, whether it's the county or the state, whatever your decision is there. We can change it to 10, from 10 to 5, or whatever number you all agree on. The high deductible is not, it's not limited to high deductible experience, we just requested experience with a high deductible plan, because that's what we have right now. So, it's not disqualifying entities based on only doing that or having 10 years of that. They just need experience in that plan, because that's what we currently have.
So, a question, Claire. Does, the way it's worded, does it give an ability to be creative in the RFP? I mean, so, I remember, you know, you, I want the best competition, because at the end of the day, that's what's gonna be best for us and for our residents. So, I don't want to be limiting. So, is, is the creative ability in this, the way it's worded now?
Yes, and we can soften those requirements, the years and the region, and we can also just add language, you know, comparable experience, or something like that, for any qualification that might void some of the firms that you referenced. And keep in mind, when the evaluation criteria is completed, it's on all of their qualifications, right? So, this, these wouldn't necessarily be disqualifying, like the high deductible, how much experience they have in that, would not be a disqualification factor, it would just factor into their general qualifications. So, whatever we strike will still be a consideration, right? So, it's just how you word it. You know, are we being more specific, or are we lumping it into the general evaluation criteria? So, most agencies do include some years, right? Because you want to specify some minimum level of requirement, so that you're, you know, sifting out some firms. But, but however you want to make that happen, we can make sure that that creative factor will be considered.
I think, not necessarily the, making sure the, whoever bids on it has those qualifications, but what is being received? What, what product are they gonna give us for options? To make sure that they're not just providing us a high deductible option, that we're getting every option possible, so that when the decision's made, we're making the best decision for our employees at best price.
Absolutely, and that comes after this. So, that is not part of the RFP. That will come once they get the broker of record agreement, they go out and then solicit those bids on our behalf. And yes, we market everything, every plan, every carrier that would serve our employees. So, that piece comes later. Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so then, we had a motion to approve this originally, the way it was, but now we have to vote. Oh, I can hear you.
May I ask another question? Commissioner Sargent, you had a list of things. Are we addressing those?
Yes. If we do the, reduce it from 10 to 5 years, reduce it from 10 to 5 years, take out the regional, you know, or specify the region that we want, Florida, or do we want nationwide people to bid on our insurance, so that we're getting the best product? I mean, I don't know if we limit that. To make sure that we're, you said that it'll come back to make sure that we're not getting just a high deductible option.
And Commissioner, I just looked up, Item 5, under minimum qualifications, just says demonstrated ability to be able to design and implement a high deductible. So, that doesn't mean that's what we would have, or that they have to have a certain amount of years' experience in that field.
Sure, and then, what about the wording for local preference? How do we want that? Do we want it Volusia County?
Oh, this is just the, he's referencing the regional experience, right? Similar geographic locations.
Correct. But if we're gonna give a preference to a local vendor, how do we want to do that? Volusia County?
We can't do that.
You can't. Your ordinance does not allow you to do that, and I don't know what Volusia County's ordinance allows in that regard, but our ordinance does not presently give us that ability to do that. It would require us to many ordinance, and then we would need to determine whether, you know, we create a preference in a way that eliminates competition, or creates a favorable preference for a particular proposer, we would need to weigh that into balance as well. So, I don't have a good answer for you that this evening, other than the fact that ordinance does not currently allow that. This question has come up in other RFP matters as well, so it's, it's kind of the same, the same answer.
Also, the, where, on Item 1, where it says, "Have at least 10 years' experience under the same broker name," many of these local broker firms are, you know, are being bought up by national firms, so I think that might take away a potential vendor, someone from St. Augustine, Jacksonville, that could provide us an option, because maybe their name has changed in 10 years.
What about, someone mentioned 5.
That was the 5, that we talked about.
Okay.
Five, but I did just think about Assured Partners just got bought out by who, and they're a huge local broker.
Correct, so their name's gonna be changed to Marsh, and that rules them out now.
Yeah. What would they be submitting under what name?
I don't know, they're a huge local.
If they were bought out, they're probably, are they submitting under the bigger firm's name?
I don't know what their new DBA, I don't know.
And I don't know when the transition's effective.
I mean, it doesn't matter. The other option is to delete it and just put generic language about that the experience will be considered.
Could we do maybe the producer has X amount of experience, rather than the?
Yes, and that's already in there.
Because that's important, or the account manager that handles the policies, like certain amount of expectations.
Yes.
I agree with what's been said, but my big thing, too, is, and this kind of goes along those lines, making it where we get more people towards competitive, because, I mean, our taxpayers are the ones that save in the end.
And Item 8 does say the client executive assigned to the account must have a minimum of 10 years' experience providing benefit services, so that encompasses that piece. Well, for that, client executive, 10 years is, I think, adequate, right? I mean, we want to make sure we're getting qualified.
I'm totally good with the 10 years on the client. I guess it was the name, only because all of these brokers are being bought out by huge companies recently. I mean, and the whole point of our RFP is to get something that's not the exact same of what we're normally used to, so let's, let's see what else is out there and be able to get the most competitive options.
So, are we okay with 5, or do you want a different year there?
We're really excluding Assured Partners entirely if we put 5 years of experience under the same broker name.
We'll delete that and just include it under the general review of qualifications.
I mean, I just want to make sure everybody else is okay with that, not just me.
I would just say 5 years with experience, no matter what the broker's name was, as long as they had 5 years in the business.
Okay, just delete under the same, using the same name.
So, if you want to do that, I can't make the motion here, but if you want to make that motion, then let's make that motion, and then we'll give staff direction and go from there.
I would make the motion that we do any brokerage with 5, at least 5 years' experience.
Under the same broker name?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second, that.
Okay, good. Any other discussion here? No? Okay, City Clerk, please call the vote.
Oh, wait, pardon. Do you want, what about the geographic reference?
I would like the geographic changed as well. I would specifically say Florida municipalities, rather than geographic area or geographic location. It's more specific.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for that.
Well, actually, if Commissioner Riley wants to amend his motion to that, we could just do it that way.
That's fine.
Okay, good. All right. Any other discussion? No?
Do you have any other motions before we?
Well, Kristen made the second already.
For the record, second.
Okay. All right, City Clerk.
Can you restate the motion?
Okay, you want to restate the motion, then? Commissioner Riley?
I think the motion was 5 years, 5 years of experience, no matter, you know, how long they've been under a broker name, and using the state of Florida as the geographic location.
Thank you so much.
And Commissioner Deaton, second?
Second.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
City Clerk, please call the vote.
This is on the underlying motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Talland?
Abstain.
Commissioner Sargent?
Abstain.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes.
Now, do we have to vote on the whole thing now, really?
We already did that.
Yeah, I think, I think the corrections were subsumed within the main motion, so.
Just wanted to make sure that we covered all of it.
And we'll make those changes prior to it being posted, and we'll send you a copy for your records.
Okay, good.
Gallagher.
Okay, Gallagher. Okay, we're gonna move on to number 7, Public Hearings. I will now open the public hearings. For City Clerk, please read Title 7A.
Ordinance Number 2,025-14, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, District and General Regulations, Article 6, Overlay Districts, Section 2-71, Historic Districts and Landmarks of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code. By removing the property located at 63 Civil Street, the Barbie House, from the Ormond Beach Historic Landmarks List, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date, this is the second reading of ordinance number 2,025-14, read by title only.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? We are missing one person, but I guess it's okay. City Clerk, please call the vote.
All right, Commissioner Sargent is not here. Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes.
7B, City Clerk, please retitle.
Ordinance Number 2,025-15, an ordinance annexing one parcel of real property into the City of Ormond Beach, said property located at 1005 North US Highway 1, Volusia County Parcel Number 4238-01-29-0020, setting forth zoning privileges and obligations regarding the property, redefining the territorial boundaries of the City of Ormond Beach to include the property, redesignating the boundaries of Zone 1 of the City of Ormond Beach to include the property, providing for transmission, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2,025-15, read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? See none. City Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes.
7C, City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance Number 2,025-17, an ordinance of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan for the City of Ormond Beach in its entirety pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes, adopting Comprehensive Plan 2045, including amendments to the plan administration, future land use element, transportation element, utilities element, conservation element, coastal management element, housing element, recreation and open space element, capital improvements element, intergovernmental coordination element, cultural and historical resources element, public schools, facilities element, and property rights element, and all associated maps and figures, providing for the transmittal of copies of the notice and amendments to the state reviewing agencies, the Volusia Growth Management Commission, the County of Volusia, and any other local government or governmental agency requesting a copy. Providing public hearings, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date, this is the first reading of ordinance number 2,025-17, read by title only.
So moved.[1770.66]
Oh, you know, I have a speaker on this one. Sorry. Audience remark, I would like to call Jennifer Bright.
Since the city has decided to update the existing comprehensive plan, it would be nice to see all the elements done like the property rights elements, the bare minimum that the state requires. To make changes to the comprehensive plan, it must go through the county and the state. By adding more than is legally required to the document, the city is handing over more control than required to the county and the state. Ask yourselves why. There are hundreds of pages to this document, and I have read all versions and have spent hours discussing with the planning department, and they've been great. With that said, there is no way to cover all the issues that could affect the citizens of Ormond Beach in three minutes. So here are a few highlights. Reducing the need for new or expanded autos or auto parking facilities. A 20% reduction in parking requirements for all development and redevelopments. Changing the water usage from per person to per residents for raw and drinking water, and residential reclaimed water usage would be cut in half. The raw water from, is currently at 124 gallons per person, and it would change to 330 gallons per residence. This would increase a burden on families. The plan removes the term handicapped and disabled and replaces the term special populations and persons with disabilities. This will harm our residents with disabilities. It sounds great on the surface until you look up the definition, special populations, in Section 330 of the Public Health and Service Act. And it includes, just to name a few, migrant and seasonal agricultural workers and their families, people experiencing homelessness, residents in public housing, people limited with English proficiency, immigrants and minorities. Also, I have found multiple references, at least 27, which the city references acquiring land or land acquisition. But there is no mention that the land taken out of private ownership is usually no longer taxed. This placing a greater burden on the remaining privately owned land. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I don't have any other cards. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? City clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. I will now close the public hearings. We're going to move on to section eight here. City clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance number 2025-18, an ordinance amending Section 17-5, reserved of Chapter 17 Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places of the Code of Ordnances by adding a new section titled Preservation of Public Spaces, providing terms and conditions and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2025-18, read by title only.
I have no cards here. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I've got a question for Randy. So this ordinance talks about no public sleeping overnight, overnight, but doesn't regulate daytime. Is, is there anything we can do for that that's not conflicting with other ordinances, state, county?
So the amendment before you this evening is intended to bring our ordinance in alignment with recently adopted change to state law that prohibits overnight camping, if you will, camping and sleeping on public property. We have other ordinances that deal with camping, generally speaking, and a variety of other circumstances. And this is not intended to address that specifically, but we do have, I believe, ways that we try to resolve those types of situations.
So this is just getting us in alignment with what we need to do?
This gets us in alignment with the state recently adopted state law, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Randy, correct me if I'm wrong, too, the state, that state statute that was passed, I guess, last year, that pertains to sleeping in any public place during any time, does it not?
At night.
Okay.
At night only. So, but we have a variety of other ordinances that we rely on for a variety of situations. And we've been able to utilize them pretty effectively. So.
Great. Any other discussion? See none. City clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. And move on to 9A. City clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance number 2025-16, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordnances of the city of Ormond Beach by amending Section 2-300 methods of source selection of Division Three purchasing of Article Nine Financial Matters of Chapter Two Administration by amending the purchasing threshold for formal bidding and approval, and amending Section 2-313 payment of claims of Division Four Risk Management Program of Article Nine Financial Matters of Chapter Two Administration by increasing the claims committee authorization limit to settle claims, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2025-16, read by title only.
I have one speaker here. I'd like to call Jennifer Bright.
I spoke on this issue at the last meeting and went over some common reasons to keep the purchasing cap at 25,000, which include fair taxpayer representation, transparency and accountability, fiscal discipline and transparent budgeting, and preventing unnecessary debt. Some of the reasons that were discussed at the last meeting by the commission for needing to increase the purchase cap included, but not limited to, the need to buy police cars. I fail to see why the city would need to buy a patrol car on a whim. I feel these large-ticket items should be in the budget. I would think the city has a formula to determine the approximate miles each vehicle has driven, and the miles at which are deemed appropriate to replace, hence knowing when and how many vehicles would need to be budgeted for. Another reason was to take care of emergency situations. At the 4-1 meeting, consent item 75 was an item to notify the city commission of emergency purchase of a breaker at a cost of $26,000-plus. The item was already purchased even before coming before the commission. This meeting, consent item 80, the purpose of this item was to notify the city commission of an emergency expenditure exceeding $25,000 procurement threshold to repair a sanitary sewer line. An emergency? This problem was reported to the city in September of 2024, and the invoice was dated March 10th, in the amount of $51,000-plus. That reflects the work that was already performed. So as we can see by these examples, an increase in the purchasing cap is not necessary, since the city does not have to wait for the commission meeting to address these emergency situations. But by having these items on the agenda, the residents can see, easily see, where their funds are going. Once again, these factors demonstrate how transparency, strategic planning, and community engagement can lead to successful fiscal management under a $25,000 purchasing cap. Thank you.
Okay, with that said, any other cards? Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes.
Am I correct that we self-insure our autos for like the police and fire? So if a vehicle gets crashed, that's an example of how we would have to purchase a new vehicle, correct? Like, we can't plan for that?
That's correct. And, and any other vehicle would be in the budget, but we still have to go through the formality of bringing it to you under the current process.
But if we crash a vehicle, that could potentially take a vehicle from our law enforcement off the road. So this actually makes the process more efficient.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Joyce?
I just wanted to explain that. It's really difficult. These vehicles come off the assembly line, and they come to the dealership, and usually First Inn gets it. So by the time we get there with coming to you and getting the approval, da-da-da-da, it's already gone. So a couple of years ago, we had to put our name in the hat and, and do that. So, yes, they, you know, people crash into police officer cars, which you think would never happen, but it does happen. So that is one of the issues. It's not the only issue.
Thanks, Joyce. Any other discussion? See none. City clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to reports, suggestions, and requests, and commission reports. And we're going to start with the city manager.
Thank you all. So your final goal-setting workshop is scheduled for Tuesday, May 6th, and your next regulated commission meeting is May 20th. Upcoming workshops, the operating, the capital budget will be June 3rd, so please mark your calendars for that. We talked about these dates before, so they shouldn't be a surprise. And July 22nd is the operating budget. So June 3rd capital, we always do capital first because there's the big ticket items, and then the operating budget. And then at that meeting, will they set tentative millage? At the commission meeting on July 22nd is when you have to set the tentative millage. I believe it has to be into the property appraiser by the 24th? August 1st? Fourth, August 4th? So, so there's a little bit of wiggle room time if something doesn't go as planned, but we don't have that much room. The EDC, in partnership with Regrow the Loop and Regrow Volusia, will host Earth Day and an annual free tree giveaway on Saturday, April 19th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There's a mulberry tree, what other trees did he say?
Bottle?
There's four different, four different trees. Yeah.
Four different trees you can choose from, and first come, first served. Swing Into Spring Concert Series, the Casements and Ormond Beach Leisure Services present the first free concert of our annual Swing Into Spring Concert Series with Diego and Company on Thursday, April 24th, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. Art in the Park, May 3rd, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, that's a Saturday, and May 4th, on Sunday, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM in Rockefeller Gardens. It's really a big event. Lots of people like to come out. Admission is free. There's parking available. There's entertainment, kid craft projects, and Community Girl Scouts. Arts are going to be on display, so that's exciting. If you have children, summer camp registration is fast approaching. It's open now and will remain open until filled. Session one will run from June 9th to June, to July 3rd, and session two will run from August 7th to, to July 7th to August 1st. I have, first up, shelter statistics, if you're interested in those. December 29 to 25, 1,821 people were served, 24 of which were from Ormond Beach. 11,000, 1,170 residents with total income, 614 residents with social security or social security disability, 522 residents with jobs, 1,008 residents with Medicare or Medicaid insurance, 937 residents with food stamps, 146 residents with birth certificates. All residents received access to medical and mental health coverage. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have those.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Assistant city manager?
No comments. Thank you.
City attorney?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, this evening we'll begin with Commissioner Deaton.
Thank you. Last I heard, Rainbow Park will be open this Friday, April 18th, from dusk to dawn. Any stipulations on that? Are we good to go?
Good.
Good, awesome. So we're good to go on that. I've gotten a few complaints regarding 95 and Granada. I know some of this is FDOT when it comes to like the dead plants, and a lot of it is just not very kept up very well. I did forward you one complaint earlier today. I'm sure it was too, too late for you to review, but I just wanted to bring that up, that, you know, with the two gas stations facing each other that are boarded up, and one having the partial fence, it's, I would love to work on the corridor beautification if we're able to, or if we can contact FDOT to work on their part on that, something we could do to?
I think we are, I think we pay, pay part of that. So we'll talk to FDOT.
Yes, some of the plants are ours, yes. So if we could work on that, that would be fabulous. I'd love to see that going. I have gotten a lot of complaints recently about some homeless camps. I guess the one that was directly behind the Burke and Down gas station has now moved out west, right behind Walgreens, where the Timber Creek apartments are supposed to go. They got cleared out a couple of times, and they keep moving back. But every time they get moved out, they're moving more west towards the neighborhoods, and they're going into the neighborhoods, and we're getting more complaints. I know we've asked for a workshop a couple of times, but I would just love to go over some of the state regulations, the local regulations, things that we're able to do and not do.
I think we have one.
Yeah, so I think that is all I have. Have a good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was delighted to read in the paper that I guess the issue of the potential of the closing of Ormond Beach Elementary School has been resolved, at least for now, and the school will not be, is not only a chopping block, chopping block to be closed. So that was good news. And I'll just end with, I'm looking forward to the luncheon tomorrow, the 46th Annual Luncheon of the Casements Guild. The Casements is a true treasure in this city, and the Guild does a fine job of keeping the programming and keeping the, the programs actually strong and vibrant there. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll say good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy mayor, Commissioner Talland?
Thank you so much. One thing I did forget to make a comment of on the consent agenda is that our police vehicles are now going to be equipped with AEDs. The opioid abatement committee that you all have elected me to, to be a part of, works really hard, and they've been funding some really great projects. And Ormond came, I think it was in the fall, and it was voted upon. And these are the kind of, these are the kind of project, projects that you want, you know, to fund. So thank you to submitting it, and I'm really proud that the abatement committee thought it was a good project. I agree with you, Kristin, that I would like to, you know, we've asked about the workshop with the homeless, at least figure out what we can do and what we can't do. I know our attorney has cautioned us with a lot of things over the years, but I'm just not up to date on what, what can happen. A few of us attended the Advent Topping Out, and although Advent is in Daytona Beach, we kind of consider that an Ormond Beach hospital. We're blessed to have a very strong partner in our community. They put a lot of money into the community for a lot of projects. They are, they just spent, this project is a $220 million expansion. They're adding four stories to one tower, and one more story to another tower, which means 104 more beds, over 240,000 square feet of healthcare space, which will include four more surgical suites, and it's supposed to be completed in 2026. So I'm, I'm pleased with that because we know how healthcare, you're sitting in the emergency room with no beds. I want to congratulate our police officers that participated in the bike tour from South Florida to Daytona Beach shores. I'm proud of our officers and the leadership exhibited by our chief that is hiding in the back corner right now. So congratulations on that. I also appreciate the thank you note you all might have received from Bill Partington, Sr., thanking us for all the staff efforts to make the Celtic Festival a success. It is nice when you, when, when staff does such a great job, and, and you are appreciated. And then finally, I do want to do a personal thank you to Sean Finley for quickly, I don't know, he's, oh, there he is. There he is, for quickly addressing a resident issue I've had the last couple of days, when one of the internet companies, Wire 3, had breached some infrastructure on John Anderson. Ended up being a girlfriend of mine that waited for a whole week to let me know that she wasn't able to use her toilets for a week. And with the holiday coming, she was getting a little freaked out. I was able to contact Mr. Finley. He was able to, within 24 hours, make some resolution. And I just want to say thank you for that. I do appreciate, you make us look good when you do that. And also, thank you for that stormwater presentation. I know that was a lot of work, and I appreciate it very much. And with that, I'll say good night. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you. Commissioner Sargent?
Oh, I forgot one important thing, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I apologize. So about a year ago, I, or maybe, I brought up a linear park that I wanted for us to think about, which is right opposite 56 North Beach Street. You all thought it was a pretty cool idea. We were kind of coining it the gateway to the scenic loop. Lot of research had been done, a lot of meetings, and the short story is it did go to the quality of life and to parks and recreation, and everybody seemed to think it was a good idea. At this point, I'm wondering if it would be okay if we asked staff to take a look at what it would look, what would it take to bring the budget numbers to us for planning and design for that park and bring it to us when we're preparing for our capital project budget workshop? If you all would be in agreement with that, I would love to direct staff for that.
That would go from what, the, about the yacht club, Bailey River Bridge, right?
Bailey River Bridge up to the...
To the yacht club?
To the yacht club, and it would include the Historic Society piece, and they've actually has, have offered, if the city is willing, to do like a 100-year lease, so we can use that property and be contiguous from up there. And, you know, there's a very simple design that they're thinking, and the boat, I keep saying the boathouse, I'm sorry, the yacht club. Greg Snell is very interested in that as well. It's only been received positively, but at this point, I've asked him, how can we move this forward? And we can't unless you all direct staff to bring it to us in a budget.
I like the idea.
Okay, how you, Kristin?
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
Okay, all right.
Thank you so much, you all, and with that, I'll say goodnight.
Okay. Now Commissioner Sargent.
Thank you. I have a lot tonight, so bear with me. First, we'll start with the Donut Dash. It's gonna be Saturday at the Trail Shopping Center at 8:00 a.m. This, the proceeds benefit the Orman Beach Police Athletic Club for their youth programs. Registration, you can do it online, or you can do it there with check-in at 7:00 a.m. To piggyback on you, Commissioner Tolland, congratulations to Chief Godfrey, Rhett Summerlock, Corporal Ortiz, and Officer Medina for riding into, from Miami to Daytona Beach shores for that tour. And I gotta tell you, you know, you see all these cops come riding in, it's pretty emotional, and then you introduced me to a lady who lost her husband in 1980s. He was an officer in Daytona, and he was shot on the line of duty. It just really hits home when you meet someone. Watching all y'all riding, and I appreciate you, Chief, and everyone for doing that. Give an update on Orman Main Street, there's a lot going on. The Celtic Festival was this past weekend, an estimated 8,000 attendees. The boat pier was full with people walking from Casson Park across the bridge to the event. Lot of the small businesses, everyone was out and about. They included about 200, or 2,000 hours of volunteer time, and 140 volunteers throughout the weekend. Roughly 15% or 1,200 people of the visitors were overnight, which roughly would be about $210,000 to our economy. The day trippers probably spent about $50, roughly 100,000, and then the locals was about another estimated $96,000 worth of impact to our local community. Just thought that was something to highlight. The gentleman that spoke earlier about the redesign, that's 100% funded, the city did not have to pay anything for that. Their survey will help us identify and document our city's historic assets, many of which have never been officially recorded. So that's a very big positive. The website for Orman Main Street's also getting updated, and will help highlight the local businesses and restaurants and everything. Ike's Bait Shop over here at Casson Park, I don't know if y'all have seen it, but it's looking great. I have one request of the commission, if y'all are okay with it, but I think on the side, the lettering, it should say Ike's Granada Pier, Bait and Tackle. I think that it just, instead of Granada Pier, Bait and Tackle, I think we should highlight someone that is an ambassador to our city, that gives back, you know, fills up those soap dishes, he fills up the paper towels, the toilet paper in there, he never asks for anything. I just think it would be great if we could put Ike's. I don't know if anyone else is okay with that.
I'd like to see that.
What do you mean he doesn't ask for anything? He asked for a new bait house, he got it.
I'd like to see that as well.
I'm a little hesitant. I do like the bait shop, I do want to recognize Ike. I don't know, so this is where I'm coming from, and it may make sense or may not. Whenever you put a big name on a building, it's usually associated with a donation, like the Orman Art Museum or whatever. You have Lomans, you have Lydecker this, you have all that. And I don't want to take away from that as well. If we could find a way where his name could be prominent, but not, maybe not permanent on a building, I think I would think that might be a better way to go. But I'm not going to be an obstructionist, I'm just presenting another alternative.
It wouldn't be permanent, and the letters could come off at any time if we wanted to, but I think for now, while Ike is running the bait shop, that we should recognize that it's Ike's Granada Pier, Bait and Tackle. I just...
Who'd be responsible for constructing it, putting it up, and then taking it down?
So are we talking about a sign or on the door?
The lettering on the side of the building, it's gonna be on the side of the building.
So we have limitations on how big that can be, so staff needs to look at that and bring something back to you?
That'd be great.
Okay, thank you, Joyce.
Over the weekend, you know, we did quite the investment with the leisure services dedicated millage rate for our baseball fields. I just want you to know that we were out there, boys and I went to the batting cages, and I didn't know that there was a tournament in town. Commissioner Deaton, you participate in these tournaments. Just to give you a little idea of the economic benefit that was in our town, there were 49 teams for travel baseball. Average, you figure 12 players per team and their families coming to our town, spending money at our restaurants, going to all of our businesses. These were kids in the ages from 10U to 14U, and the baseball...
Nine U.
Was it nine U? I had 10U, sorry. And, I mean, just to see, it was Hall Road was slammed pack at the quads, Nova Rec was slammed pack. And I asked one of the coaches, you know, what do you think of our fields? And he did have a complaint. He said our mounds needed a little bit of work, but besides that, they were very pleased with our amenities and our facilities. So I thought that was great, and that's, you know, that's what we need to highlight more of, I think, is those fields should be used for tournaments all the time. We need people coming here to utilize them, spending their money here, staying in our hotels, and enjoying what we have. So I, too, would like to give an update on First Step Shelter. We all received an email, and I thought it was pretty touching to hear about this, about a resident there, and I just think we need to highlight this. It's, his name was Ted. He was aged 65, lived in Ohio, with his rent becoming unaffordable. He went to a shelter in Ohio, but while there, he was critically stabbed, resulting in significant damage to his abdominal. When he recovered, he came to Florida hoping to find a cheaper housing and safer living environment. Ted spent some time living in hotels while searching for an affordable place to live, but found that, found that like Ohio, there was little availability for housing for his income when his social security check was only $14,063. He arrived at First Step Shelter in late October 2024. Then he had a further setback because he was a victim of fraud. Furthermore, he had no birth certificate, so he couldn't immediately apply for subsidized housing. He also then had very high blood pressure, which required immediate medical attention. Fortunately for Ted, the staff at First Step Shelter knew just what to do, and soon Ted was back on track. When his birth certificate finally arrived in January, he was accepted into the RAD program, the voucher program, and moved into the facility on the river on March 24th. The First Step Shelters, we currently have 18 successful residents living there. Just think that's, you know, and there's a picture of him, but a guy that came down here and, you know, was down on his luck, and we had a place for him to seek help. Since December, and I know I'm repeating what the city manager said, but since December 2019 to March 2025, 1,821 people have been sheltered. 347, 483 meals have been served. Residents housed 903. Of the residents that have been found housed, 93% of those are still housed. I mean, that, those are great statistics. And I understand that we don't have, you know, when we look at our numbers of participation, they are light. And I would like to figure out how we can utilize this service a little bit more. I know it's, we have to recommend them there, they, the law enforcement have a side to it, too, but I think we need to look into how to potentially help more. And let's face it, there's a lot of homeless people on the streets that don't want help, or have mental illness, or have drug use, or whatever it may be. But being homeless is not a crime. And I think our law enforcement officers do a great job being compassionate, but we do need to figure out some solutions for this. And, you know, we do contribute $85,000 every year to First Step Shelter, so we have a place if we, you know, if law enforcement or someone runs into a resident, we have a place to take them. And I think this is bigger than just Orman Beach. This is about our community in Volusia County, that we have a place for these residents like Ted, who is just down on his luck and needs a hand up, that's it. So I am in fully support of continuing supporting First Step Shelter. I did last year speak that I would not be willing to, or I'd want to look into potentially not funding it if it went private, because there was talks of going private. But I would not want to, and I've never said that I would not fund that. I think that's an important asset to our community, and I think that we need to just figure out how to utilize it more. And I'm not unhappy with the results that I see. I look at them and think that it's a starting point if we can do better for our community. And hopefully, we can figure a way to have more residents go out there and be like Ted. But I am on 100% support of First Step Shelter. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sargent. I will echo my fellow colleagues here on a great job by the chief and everyone else that participated in that 250-mile ride. It's a really incredible thing. I was thinking about it, saying, I wonder if I can do that, but I don't, I don't know if I could do it, but I might try one year, because that would look like a lot of fun. So good job, guys. Do we have an update on Andy Romano Park? Because for some reason, I thought that the park was gonna go under some kind of construction.
Sea walls.
No, we're still working, so I'm gonna be like, yeah, sea walls.
Yeah.
We have issued the contract to the contractor, and we're getting ready to schedule a pre-construction meeting. So we're just about to, I think that it's, do we have a timeframe? Starting in May.
Will there be any access there for residents, or will it be all closed, or...
We're gonna continue as much access to residents as possible.
Okay. Appreciate it.
There may be some limitations, maybe some limitations along there, and what I think they're gonna try and do is limit it to half at a time. And so they're gonna try and work on the north half, keep the south half active, and then when they get that north half done, flip-flop and work with the south.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
The Celtic Festival, it was really, it was a good time. I went there on Sunday, and in the morning, it was a little quiet, and the director was a little nervous. I said, people are in church, don't worry, they're gonna be coming, and by 1 o'clock, the place got filled up. I was asked to be a judge for a dog parade, which more was like a dog show, kind of. But it was a lot of fun, and we had a resident come with a goat, so, with a leash and everything, and he was walking like he was a dog, it was kind of funny. So we gave him a special award for most unique, so it was a great time. The, so I was at the meeting last night for the First Step Shelter that I serve on the board, and one of the items on the agenda was to give the executive director a three-year contract. And so the, currently, the executive director at that time did not have a contract. She kind of came in after somebody was replaced, and then, you know, kind of took on the role, and then, you know, and then, you know, she had a little salary increase at some point along the way. But the board felt like that it was, it was important to give the executive director a three-year contract, even though that there was a 30-day clause on it where somebody, you know, if there was an issue with something that, you know, the contract would be voided, and I guess would only be a 30-day notice at that point. So I brought up some concerns about it, only because of the fact that I thought that the timing was a little wrong on this, considering there's some pending litigation going on with the shelter. You know, there was a whistleblower and things that were going on, and there was a small investigation, I think, that was done by the board before my time of service with them. And then they just, you know, closed the investigation, and then the plaintiffs that were involved decided that they were gonna get legal counsel, and we went, and now they're in the early stages, from what I know about the, where they're at with the process of this thing. So I expressed some concern about it because, you know, there's been a lot of, you know, neighboring cities and even the county council, they just had a discussion on that, I think, in January, about some of the concerns about the shelter and the, and it wasn't the, what they're doing, but what they're doing is great, you know, the program itself. You know, like, we saw the numbers here, and we listened to the one resident, which I got that email to as well. But there was been, there's been some concerns out there just from talking to people and listening that, you know, about the leadership that's running this program. So I suggested in the meeting that we should have the executive director go to the city meetings, and even cities that aren't partnered with them, to kind of give an update about what's going on, bring some more positiveness back to the table here, because the energy in the place is a little, is a little down there right now. Let the cities go through their budget process, and then in November, when we're done with the budgets and the cities are all done with that stuff, then we can have a conversation about what, you know, we can do to give the three-year contract, or whatever was gonna be negotiated at the time. And there were some people that were nodding their heads a little bit on it, but ultimately, only myself and the mayor of Daytona Beach, which was kind of surprising, voted no on giving the contract extension. The contract was granted, but like I said, I want to see the program succeed. I think that it's a great program. We have, a lot of people don't want to participate in it for some reason, and that's something that we can, you know, maybe talk about, maybe that workshop that, you know, was brought up would be a good help to just, so we can kind of gather that information and then bring it back to the executive director and their people so that when we have our meeting, they can kind of give us the info, the feedback as well, because feedback would really be helpful. I've only attended a couple of meetings since I've been on the board right now, because we only had a couple, but I think that feedback from the cities that are partnered with us would be really, really helpful in helping us, the board, give direction to the staff on some of the things we can do to improve it. But, so that was pretty much what happened yesterday. And, you know, I just, I stand firm that I think that the timing was wrong, and that we could have done, I think, as the executive director, should, could be out there and promoting this thing a little better and trying to get that stigma, you know, away from the shelter that happened with this whole whistleblower investigation and litigation stuff. So with that, that is all I have, so everyone have a good night, meeting adjourned. So with that, that is all I have, so everyone have a good night, meeting adjourned.